We're going to get started. I wrote up a little preamble for myself, just to get my thoughts straight. But I'm going to, I'm going to share it with you all tonight. Because when I used to log on to these meetings, sometimes I didn't really know what was, where we were at and what was going on, although everyone here is quite experienced. But this is the monthly meeting of the Reading Planning Commission and Zoning Board. Usually we're on the first Monday of the month at 7:00 PM. We switch to Wednesday this month to accommodate the school board on Monday, although typically we're not going to do that because it's too complicated to change everything. We're in the process of reviewing the Reading zoning ordinance as required by the state of Vermont and the terms of a state grant that we received for this purpose. Our goal is to try to bring our ordinance into compliance with state law and consider whether to adopt other priorities encouraged by the state, such as affordable housing, senior housing, et cetera. I am the current chair of the Planning Commission. Jane is the current chair of the Zoning Board. Stacy is currently serving as vice chair of both boards. We are all volunteers who've been appointed by the Select Board. We are also subject to the open meeting law, so we don't discuss board business outside of public meetings, except for some limited exemptions under the law. So if it sometimes seems like we're discussing things for the first time, it's because we are. We are operating as a three-person board. I'm not going to recruit any of you online to be our fourth and fifth person, but please spread the word. We are looking for two additional members, as well as two others who might want to be alternates. We're also joined by Martha, who's representing the Madison County Regional Commission and is so helpful with all of this stuff. And we are appreciative of Shanann, who is taking the minutes for our meetings. Under our bylaws, the public has an opportunity to speak at the end of the agenda when recognized by the chair, that's me. Please limit your comments to about three minutes and address them generally to the board, not each other. And likewise, we ask all public comments to be made productively and respectfully. That said, if there's something that we're talking about where you have a specific comment, raise your hand and we're happy to try to fit that in if it makes sense and time allows. If you're on Zoom, please mute your computer and maybe Rebecca from Okemo Valley TV can do that for everybody, so we don't get to hear what happens at your house. And we will be following an agenda this evening, which was published in the Reading Informer prior to our meeting. That's my little preamble to help me gather my own thoughts, but maybe it helps with everybody else as well.
Yes, thank you.
Is that the same Kathy?
Yeah.
Kathy just joined.
Hi Kathy. Our agenda was set out before. Are there any changes to the agenda as it was published? Tonight, we're going to be taking reports from our usual suspects and then we're doing continuing business of reviewing the town of Reading zoning ordinance. Some of the topics tonight are draft performance measures for lighting, where senior housing might be appropriate in districts, and really focusing on non-conforming uses and structures, so we can get into that. We have our minutes from April 1st, which were published and taken by Shanann. Is there a motion to approve those?
Yeah, I don't know if it matters, but there is one spelling error right there. It's not that big of a deal. Conversations is just spelled wrong.
Okay. Any other changes?
So I'll approve the, I'll motion to approve the minutes with that change.
Nice second.
Okay. Unless there are any objections, the minutes are approved. Reports, mail and email. I am not aware of any emails that we have received in our planning mailbox. Jane's checked that recently. The only mail that I've gotten recently was from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns and it was Q and As from their open meeting law, which I can either copy and share with both of you or maybe find it online. It's kind of long. Either way, that was the one thing in the mailbox. And it's really helpful. Apparently the open meeting law, maybe have some changes coming in the next six months or so, I've heard, but I'm not sure, so for now, that's what we're working with. Regional Planning Commission?
Kathy.
Kathy, do we have any update or report from you?
Yep. Just in the way of news, January, June 1st, from 10 to 3, there's a Home Creators Expo at the Hartford Tech Center. And their goal is to encourage a community of people that might have a desire to turn existing space into additional dwelling units. Mark has provided funding for a cleanup of a parcel on Main Street in Windsor. Construction will begin as soon as the cleanup is complete. The site will be used to construct 26 housing units for those who are in low and medium incomes. And you can see this project, it's right behind the Windsor Dyna and it's fenced off right now, but you can see the equipment and everything down there. Mark is also funding an assessment and cleanup project behind the Windsor Station, the restaurant. The developer hopes to begin construction of a recreational facility that will include a skateboard park, a pump track, and other recreational amenities. And he hopes to have that going by early in the summer. Mark is also funding two projects in Springfield at the Paxton Wilson property and the Pax Street School/Black River Innovation Campus. And we've been working on those for a number of years now. June 5th through 6th, there is a downtown conference and creative sector in Bellows Falls. On Wednesday, the 5th, it's a downtown and historic preservation conference. On Thursday, the 6th, the Vermont Creative Network is hosting the 2024 Creative Sector Convening. And their tagline is be inspired, make connections, and learn new skills and innovate Vermont committees and communities through creativity. The latest news is Mark has formulated a letter in support of a position paper by the Connecticut River Joint Commission. The Joint Commission has presented an excellent paper concerning the relicensing of the three hydro dams in our area. The letter will go to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. The highlights include the concerns of sediment, erosion, fluctuations of water levels, and include a request that Hydro Quebec contribute financially to the development of mitigation efforts. This reissue of the license will be for either 30 or 50 years. And we feel it's important that some of the hydro profits be reinvested in monitoring and solving some of the impact of that, our, in our local area. And that's it from us.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you Kathy. There's a lot going on at Mark.
The green ones.
Any questions on any of that? Anybody? Nope. Okay.
Just identify two, the roof and the green B.
It's Claire.
I can't see that.
Oh, it's Claire.
Claire Walton. And who's the green B?
Brian Kelly.
Brian.
Brian Kelly, okay.
For the minutes, thank you. Energy Board, we don't have Kevin with us tonight, right? Has he asked anyone to do the Energy Board report? No.
Brian Kelly's on. Does Brian have anything?
I'm here and actually the thing that I wanted to propose to you all is that I would provide quarterly updates. This is something we discussed at our last Energy Board meeting, you know, as a, as a subcommittee of the Planning Commission, that I would, with Kevin not being on the Planning Commission anymore, I'd be happy to come maybe, or, you know, again, quarterly to kind of give you an update on things that are happening, if that's acceptable to you.
Yeah, that sounds fine.
Maybe we can plan for next time. I'm not really ready to do much tonight, but I could make it up, but if that would be all right.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm just going to leave it on the agendas for now until we kind of develop a cadence. We can take it off or leave it on and just say that's not, it's not the time for you.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Great. Thank you Brian. Zoning Administrator. Bob Allen is not here tonight, but I'm not aware of any reports that he has. Anything that you've heard?
The only question that circulated with us all was the, LeDon.
Right.
So should we discuss that on the other or should we put that here?
I'm not sure because it might all depend on what happens at the hearing next week. So maybe we can hold off on that.
Okay, so he's holding two applications.
Two applications, he told me. But I, you know, we didn't speak about it after that. So let's just hold off on that.
Okay.
And we haven't received the applications yet, right?
No, he's holding them to decide which direction they should go.
Okay. Great. ZBA, Jane is our ZBA chair.
Just reminding everybody that the whole, the hearing for the whole Art Foundation, the berms and the wall will be next Wednesday. The site visit will be from 4 to 6. And at 6 o'clock, the hearing will start here in Town Hall. And I just remind anybody who's an interested person that they don't have to do it before, but if they want to make a statement, they can email me the statement or email me beforehand declaring themselves as an interested person. And the email address is PC@readingvt.net. And that, that will probably make things go a little more smoothly, but we'll just see.
Great. Thank you. All right. We ready to move into bylaw? It's not really bylaws, the zoning ordinance review.
The modernization.
Martha, you're with us. Where we have left off, we have a couple of things we've talked about before, which we're continuing to talk about. I think where we're starting tonight is the last piece of the draft performance measures because we had talked about lighting and there were some questions of whether it was too broad and too subjective. So I think Martha has presented us with an alternative draft on that for us to consider tonight, which makes it more objective, puts in more kind of conditionality on it and suggests that where there's an issue, the Zoning Board can ask that lighting fixtures be sealeded, shielded, or downcast. So why don't we look at that first? Martha, do you want to say anything more about that?
No, I don't think so. It's, can you see my screen?
Yes, thank you.
Great. So, yeah. I'm, I can read it if there's anyone who needs it to be read, just say so.
I think we're talking about point 6.
Yes.
My concern in the last meeting, as you know, was, you know, we just don't want to put anything in here that could weaponize the regulations against others because of this.
Can you explain what you mean by that?
You know, and I, looking at this language, I'm good with all of it except where it says cast direct illumination on neighboring property between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Well, a lot of, a lot of lighting for safety and other purposes is installed to illuminate spaces between those hours. I think if you shut off the lighting, it illuminates the purpose of the lighting. If it does, if someone installed lighting that directly glares into someone's bedroom or out onto 106 or a public road, then I think establishing an ongoing community effort, we could call one another and say, hey, you have a light shining in my bedroom window. Could you please redirect it? A hundred watt bulb is very different than a 40 watt bulb. A hundred watt bulb may be too bright for some, but not bright enough for others. And that's where you get into what I'm, my concern about it being subjective and possibly weaponized. So if you took that sentence out and then put in the language that Martha suggested, where necessary to prevent illumination or glare negatively impacting neighboring property, I'm comfortable with that, that addition.
I think with direct illumination, I think what that was trying to get at was like a spotlight as opposed to a porch light. You know, the porch light has more ambient lighting whereas the spotlight is going to be more directed. Martha, what are your thoughts? I know you've looked at dozens of these provisions. Do you think there's a way to narrow that further so that it is less kind of subject to one neighbor complaining about something which may be fairly normal?
Well, so the second sentence was meant to modify the first one. So if, you know, in the, in Felchville, houses are close together and it might be impossible to prevent, you know, one neighbor from casting direct illumination onto another neighbor's property. So it's not saying you can't do that. It's saying in a situation where that is happening and there's no way to prevent it, then the board could say you have to direct it downward or just... So shielded or downcast. It's not meant to say you can't have a light. It's meant to prevent it from bothering your neighbor. I guess with, with weaponizing, unfortunately, you know, if someone wants to weaponize zoning, they can. Probably no matter how you write it. It's, people who want to work this out are going to work things out. And people who don't want to can try to use zoning as a weapon. The best way, I think, to avoid that is to be as specific and clear as possible. So that's what Eve and I were going for. You know, before it said adversely affects neighboring properties, which is pretty broad. So we got real specific by saying directly illuminating a neighboring property between certain hours. That really narrows down what someone can complain about.
How about if we removed the semicolon after 7:00 AM and put an and? Glare lighter, glare lighter reflection which cast direct illumination on neighboring property between hours of 10 and 7, and adversely affects public health, safety, or welfare?
Well, I mean, I think if you're, if you're affecting your neighbor, you're not really affecting the public necessarily.
What if the reason you have the light on between 10 and 7:00 AM is because you're concerned your neighbor is doing something in the dark on your property that you can't see if you didn't have the light?
Put a motion detector.
Well, that's, that's what I say. It can, you know, emotion light, yeah. But then that, if you, if you have this in here, the 10 to 7, and you have a light coming on because of a raccoon or an animal or a neighbor, then... Yeah, it is momentary.
It's momentary. Because I was reading about dark areas and how, how light affects us at night and how it's like healthier to be, to sleep in a dark place or to be in a dark place, your body needs to do that. So that's what I was thinking of. So anything that can bring down, you know, like covering or diffusing it in some way, or motion detector, seems to make sense to me. And then this other thing was saying that certain cities find that if they're darker, it's less crime because people notice more if somebody comes in with a light to a dark area that, that that person's not supposed to be there. So, you know, anyway.
That's an interesting question.
But it, there's like two. So I, you know, I think if there's some regulation, some guideline, then that helps everybody to know, you know, what's acceptable to us.
Although if it's not, if you're, if you're, if you're not feeling it the way it's written, I think we could put an and instead of the semicolon and preserve the idea of directly illuminating the neighbors and it's adversely affecting public health, safety, or welfare. And then we also get in impairing the vision of motor vehicle operators, which is pretty standard when I look around. I mean, it's not, it's not as restrictive as many others, but it's helpful if there's an issue where someone isn't being reasonable and not kind of being polite about your, your own space not being overlaid.
Well, you could drive through Reading at night and, what do we have, 60 homes in the village? And there's a variety of different lights. Some of it's right in your face, some of it's outside, some of it's inside and right in your face as you're driving down 106. There's just so many different types of lighting. I, I'm comfortable with all of it except for the time limits. I think the time limit is too narrow.
What do you think it should be?
I don't think there should be a time limit.
So would you like to just have it say which cast direct illumination on neighboring property adversely affects public health, safety, or welfare, et cetera? And take out the between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM?
That's what I would prefer.
I mean, I don't see any problem with that, but...
Yeah, I mean, as, as Martha just read that, that would be fine with me.
Yeah, because again, there is the idea of who's going to go around and tell people to shut their lights off at 3 o'clock in the morning.
You didn't shut your light off at 10:05. I'm, you know, going to call Bob, you know, or write an email and cause a bunch of caboots.
Okay.
Agreed.
All right, we're good with that?
Yep.
Okay. So what, I, I think what we have decided to do is Martha is keeping, this is more for anyone else listening's benefit because I think we know Martha's keeping all these changes. At the end, we're going to put together kind of a master draft of the changes that have been discussed and accepted without voting on every single thing. So if, if all of us are nodding our heads, it means that that's what is going to be going into the draft for consideration later. Okay, that is lighting. Next is the concept of senior housing. At a previous meeting, we read the definitions for senior housing and I think they seemed reasonable. I can't remember frankly if we may change it or not, but I think we were comfortable with the language around it. The issue, and I might just rephrase Martha's email, why we're even talking about it, is that our town plan says we have a need for senior housing, but our zoning regulations don't include any provisions for it. And because Section 1.2 of the Reading zoning ordinance says any use not permitted by these regs is prohibited. So senior housing, because it's not in our zoning ordinance, is technically not allowed. That's the issue. If we want to change that, Martha suggests, we could start by providing a definition, which she circulated and we all talked about last time, and I think we were good with. And this is what we're talking about tonight. Listing senior housing as a conditional use in whichever districts we think would be appropriate locations for them. So our districts are RC 20, RC something, RC...
25.
RC 25, Residential Conservation. Our R10, which is rural residential. Our R5, and then our little village districts of South Reading and Hammondsville and Felchville.
The defining part of those labels is the acreage. So our R5, five acre parcels, 10, 10 acres, et cetera.
Correct. Well, it's definitely the acreage, but also the description of what they're supposed to be. So our, our RC 25, should I keep going?
Residential Commercial.
RC 25 Residential Conservation.
Oh, Conservation.
And the purpose is to limit growth on certain undeveloped, is to limit growth on certain undeveloped lands in Reading, which because of their size, resource value, are better suited for forestry, wildlife management, and other low-intensity uses. That's RC 25. That's like the woods. Our R10, this, this definition actually is being subject to change, although I am, I think we need to revisit it. But what it, what it currently says is the purpose of our R10 is to limit growth on certain undeveloped lands in Reading, which because of their size and resource value, are better suited for forestry and wildlife management. That's the current definition. There is a proposed broadening of that to allow more development.
Allow low-density development.
Low-density development.
On land with significant value.
Yep. And then our R5 is to provide for low-density rural development on lands which may have resource value and are serviced by public roads and generally suitable for low-density residential uses. Maybe that would be something that would be appropriate for senior housing. And then we have residential district R1. So one acre, one acre, yeah, in South Reading. And then RCA in Hammondsville, residential commercial. And then RCB in Felchville, also residential commercial. And both, and all of these are intended to provide for small lot residential growth near existing settlements on land suitable for onsite sewage disposal and water, serviced by improved roads, that's South Reading. Hammondsville is to provide for development of rural village setting compatible with residential and commercial uses at a density which will not result in the need for municipal sewage facilities. And Felchville is to provide for development in a rural village setting of compatible residential and commercial uses at a density compatible with providing safe wastewater disposal and drinking water. So those are the areas that we're, are talking about. And I think we agreed that senior housing is a good, good cause that we should be having in our zoning ordinance consistent with our town plan.
Absolutely.
And I think we agreed before that the language Martha circulated seemed appropriate. And what we're talking about now is if we were to insert this into our zoning code, where would it be put? And Martha, this is conditional use, yeah?
Yes. She said conditional use.
So let's discuss.
Well, I wouldn't think it'd be appropriate to put anything in a conservation zone.
I think that's right.
So we can take that off.
Yep.
Commercial, I think it would be, you know, but it is, it would be governed by Act 250, so it would be considered commercial development.
So that would mean Felchville.
Hammondsville.
Hammondsville.
Those are the only two commercial areas, right?
Yes.
So would it be possible to have .5 acre per unit?
You got to point me to something.
At the bottom of the lot requirements, would we have to change that?
Because that's what it says in the definition?
Under the lot requirements for like Hammondsville, residential commercial, at the bottom of the, of the graph. There's the graph and then below.
Yep.
So the lot requirement is minimum lot size per dwelling is 0.5 acres.
And then you have to look at the, what would the configuration of the senior housing look like? Is it an apartment building? Is it a row of townhouses? Is it a few cottages? And then if you look at the development of a senior development or a senior compound, if you will, then is it more appropriate to have it on a larger parcel? So do we approve 10 acres of 25 acre zones? So that they have more room to work with, you could put?
I mean, my own personal opinion from living in a 10 acre zone is it's really hard to get to my house in the winter and in mud season. So if you had a lot of seniors and you had a lot of deliveries and you needed an ambulance every once in a while, it could be tricky.
So then we need to consider accessibility.
To, to me, our, our R5 possibly. Certainly the, the town centers, you know, Felchville, Hammondsville and South Reading seem like possibilities. Martha, I don't know the answer to this question. How, what's the interplay of the minimum lot size in those areas with adding the definition of senior housing? Do you know?
Right now, you, you have both, I believe you have both the minimum lot size and a density per acre. And the density per acre, I think in those villages is half an acre.
That's what.
Yeah, yeah, that's what Jane was pointing out.
Right.
Except it's a little less, it's 0.25 in Felchville. And a half, 0.5 in Hammondsville.
Right. Okay.
So that means that if it was a 10 acre lot, you could get 20, supposedly 20 units on a 10 acre lot.
A 10, if it's 0.25, you could get 40 conceivably on a 10 acre lot. I mean, given all the other things.
0.5, it would be 20.
0.5, it would be 20.
Right.
A maximum.
It depends on what size the lot is and setbacks and parking.
And septic and right.
Being with a larger scale, senior housing development.
I know it's possible only because I'm familiar with the one up in Norwich where they have, I don't know how many units they have. It's not a huge parcel. It's right behind the police station. And they have kind of attached cottages. Some are two level, some are one level, and they are on a septic system.
Oh, they are?
So they are.
Wonder what size their lot is?
I don't know. There's, it's mostly a parking lot. And then there are the houses with kind of appropriate, appropriate setbacks. And it's kind of tucked in behind the police station off the main street. But they, they are not on the municipal water. I don't think there is municipal water and sewer there. So it is possible. I'm not a developer.
Well, the state would have had to approve the septic system. So they must have had appropriate perking and testing.
And it's actually a HUD development, so I'm sure they're subject to all sorts of things.
Sure.
I don't know that we need to solve for that. I think we just need to consider in which districts the town would be happy allowing these to be developed if they were feasible.
And we'd have to keep in mind it's conditional use. So whomever would want to develop one of these would have to get state approval and go through all the, jump over all the hurdles to, to get to that point to where it was feasible. So I think if we just, we go directly to where we think they should be allowed, make that decision, adopt the language.
So it would be a commercial enterprise? Yes, so it would have to be in the residential, commercial district, right?
Not necessarily.
We could also start with that and see how it goes. You know, these can be changed again. It's, I think where we, we don't want to have unintended consequences. So if we're not sure how it would play out, I think putting in a definition, permitting it as a conditional use in our, our three town districts and seeing what happens is not an unreasonable way to proceed.
Using this definition that Martha proposed?
Yeah.
I agree. Keeping it out of any area that, any zone that's conservation.
I, I think the RC 25 is, is kind of not consistent with their definition. The RR10s, it seems really complicated for accessibility issues. And if it's, if those lands are supposed to have significant value for forestry and wildlife management, maybe that's not low density development. The RR5, let's look at that again. To provide for low density rural development on lands which may have resource value and are serviced by public roads and are generally suitable for low density residential uses. Do we think the senior housing development fits that definition? No. Okay, no. I think that's the answer. So I think, I think for now, what we're comfortable recommending for approval down the road by the select board is in, sorry, the South Reading, the Hammondsville and the Felchville.
South Reading also?
Well. What do you think? Make a case.
Okay, so South Reading is not strictly residential, but that's okay. Yeah. Okay, yeah, South Reading.
So South Reading.
Hammondsville and Felchville.
Small lot, well, let's, let's look at the definition. Small lot, this is South Reading, small lot residential growth near existing settlements on land generally suitable for onsite sewage disposal and water serviced by improved public roads. Small lot residential growth.
I think it'd be the three.
Okay. All right. So it's not to say that there is any parcel in those areas right now that are feasible.
Right.
But if we're trying to encourage certain uses in our town plan, they can't happen if we don't include the possibility. All right.
I'm sorry, I, I missed, is South Reading in or out?
Yeah.
I think we are recommending in.
Okay, thanks.
Martha, next is the nonconformities language. I would love it if you would introduce this topic. Springtime.
Did you lose it?
No, I think she's just getting her documents up.
So I'll keep talking until Martha opens it up. So the issue of the nonconformities is that this is going to what we were talking about last time with the accessory farm businesses. There are existing businesses which have existed for a long time, which may or may not be in compliance with our current zoning code. And it's, it's the grandfathering issue. Either because the structure doesn't conform, maybe it was built at a time before the setbacks. Or because the use doesn't conform, maybe the rules were different then. Maybe it was allowed somehow, got a variance. But this is addressing nonconformities in certain situations, usually which have to do with continuing or if their business gets interrupted or their structure gets destroyed, how they recover after that. So that's the, that's the tea up for you, Martha.
Sorry, I was muted. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So as I had mentioned in the email when I sent this section to you, Reading's existing section started off with definitions that were different from the definitions in Article 7.
Which is glossary in our zoning code. So we had two different sets of definitions in our code. Is that what you're saying?
So that, yes. So the first thing I wanted to do was to, you know, fix that. The ones in the, in the definition section, for the most part, follow statutory, the statutory definition. There's one exception. We can look at that in a little bit. So and then the way the current nonconformity section is organized in Reading's existing regulations, the, the structures and uses are intermingled. And I thought it would be more clear to pull them out and address them separately. So I did that. And then there's one section which we'll get to as we scroll down, but that you may want to consider if you want to keep it. I left it in for now, but if you want to keep it, you may want to provide some more guidance than what's there now. So a lot of it was, I mean, partly it was the definitions, conflicting definitions, and partly it was an organizational thing. And as we discussed last time and we looked at accessory on farm businesses, we wanted to be clear that existing farm businesses could continue. And we briefly looked at your nonconformity section and it didn't have language that specifically said that an exist, preexisting nonconforming use can be continued indefinitely. So I also wanted to add that. So with the other section that we'll get to, the small lots, I showed all the crossouts and all the additions, but there were so many changes to your existing language that I just wrote it up separately. So.
So we're jumping into the nonconformities, separating the uses from the structures. We're not of the accessory on farm business right now. You're just sort of giving the layout of how we are where we are.
Right.
Okay.
So there, there's enabling legislation in state law that says that towns need to figure out how to address nonconformities, whether they continue, can continue and for how long and under what circumstances they might be discontinued and so on and so forth. So that's what this does.
Yep. So there were some discretionary things in here that we were going to talk about. If we go through it, starting with the uses, the baseline is a legally existing nonconforming use, and there's a definition of that, may be continued indefinitely at its preexisting scope and scale. That's the baseline. That's saying stuff is grandfathered, which I think everybody agrees is reasonable and desirable. In discontinuing a nonconforming use, we have language here that is that if it's discontinued, voluntarily discontinued for 12 months, it can't be reestablished, but has to be replaced with a conforming use. That's pretty standard, right, Martha?
That there's different time periods?
So I think.
The state statute is six months.
It has to be.
Yeah, it can be longer.
So I, I think what, what we were thinking when we talked about this is that six months is really short.
Oh, yeah.
So if you are trying, if, if you're trying to sell your business and there's a pause, six months may not get it done.
Or there's a death in the family or something.
This is maybe a little more permissive in kind and pro-business. Or pro, pro the use, you know, not, not punitive. Another discussion point is that where a nonconforming use is involuntarily discontinued, for example, because of a flood. And again, these are uses, not structures, that the, the use may be reestablished within two years of the date, I think.
That was a question.
I think one year was the original language. And, you know, with reconstruction, insurance, redevelopment, do we think one year is too short? Is two year too much?
And I think two years is too short with the climate we have going on. I mean, insurance, an insurance fight would, could easily last well over two years.
What do you think it should be?
Four years would be too long, maybe three?
Jane? Your thoughts?
I'm thinking three.
Martha, what do you think of three?
I think three is fine. When you and I were discussing it, you thought three might be better because, you know, we had the pandemic and things were not available and, you know, supply chain issue, you know, just, there's a lot, a lot of things that could come in.
Really be long enough because we're still dealing with the repercussions of that.
I know prior to 2020, we probably all thought one year was plenty. I think everyone's had their timetables reset, supply chain disruptions. Anyone on our Zoom call have any strong opinions on this? Or Richard?
I agree, you know, say, you know, insurance could take you up to two years to do and then getting the supplies, I think three is fair. And then if they can, they can always come to you and give an extension, right?
That's a very good point. What do you do if you've eaten up three years and need more time?
I don't know.
I don't think that is contemplated in our current schema. So I think that whatever the year is, I, I am comfortable with three. I think the language that originally said one, I had suggested two. I can also be comfortable with three. I think four goes too far.
Isn't Wetrovus like an example of this? That when they closed their doors within six months, if somebody didn't take over the?
Yep.
So six months is nothing. Six months is nothing.
Yeah, six months is nothing. I think three.
Okay. Three, Martha. What else? So the other discretionary piece that we were thinking of is under subsection four. A nonconforming, what the language is being proposed is a nonconforming use can be changed to a different nonconforming use following review by the ZBA, but only if the board finds that the degree of nonconformity of the new use is not greater than the degree of nonconformity of the original nonconforming use and doesn't have an undue adverse effect on the character of the area or the district in which it's located. I am not sure I can feel too excited about someone swapping a nonconforming use for a different nonconforming use. And this is discretionary. So I don't feel strongly about retaining this, but everyone else should.
Well, what's an example of a slot? Like used patrol bus again, they turned it into like an auto parts store? Or they turned it into a, so that would be switching nonconforming to nonconforming?
I don't know if we should be using Wetrovus as an example because Wetrovus is in a commercial zone and it is zoned for a commercial enterprise. I, I, I paused a little bit while reading this. And I think my initial question would be to Martha, can you elaborate a little bit on your comment about it being unfair?
Well, so I was just thinking, you know, if you have two lots next to each other, more or less identical, and one of them happens to have a nonconforming use in it and the other one doesn't, the person who has the nonconforming use, why should they be allowed to change it to a different use that's also nonconforming? when their neighbor can't engage in the same use?
So they've got the golden ticket, and the neighbor's out of luck. So you're not, or just to be clear, Martha, are you, you're not promoting this nonconforming use as a suggestion is desirable? You're just throwing it out there because we should talk about it, yeah?
This I kept from your existing regulations. This is what you currently have, either verbatim or close to what you currently have in your current regulations. If you want to keep it, my suggestion was to provide additional guidance, because, you know, how do you know? Or how do you determine whether it increases the degree of nonconformity or not? And then I gave you a bunch of examples there of questions you might ask to determine that. But, but then, of course, there's also just a, you know, a basic fairness question.
What, what does the state say?
I would have to pull up that language, which I can do.
In your example of one lot equal to another lot, one with nonconforming use and one without, then we could assume that the one with a nonconforming use is grandfathered in?
I think the state law that you sent around, Martha, is not telling us which way to go one way or another. It says that we should specify the extent to which and circumstances under which a nonconformity may change or expand. So it's completely discretionary for us. My, my, my gut on this is that if I have a nonconforming use and I'm doing that, that is, is fine. But if all of a sudden I want to change it to completely something else, I'm not sure that I'm grandfathered in. That's my gut.
I would agree with that.
Okay, so if that's, if that's what we think, then that would be striking out that subparagraph four. Carry on, nonconforming structure?
So just to read that section of the statute, it says, you know, "All bylaws shall define how nonconformities will be addressed, including standards for you, nonconforming uses, structures, and lots. And then, "To achieve the purposes of this chapter, municipalities may regulate and prohibit expansion and undue perpetuation of nonconformities." Specifically, a municipality may, may, that doesn't have to. And then, number three is specify the extent to which and circumstances under which a nonconformity may change or expand. So.
I think we're comfortable not having switched, switched nonconformities, Martha.
Okay, so striking that section.
Correct.
Okay.
Moving on to nonconforming structures. So it's pretty much paralleling the uses. A legally existing nonconforming structure, as defined in our ordinance, may be allowed to exist indefinitely and may be repaired and maintained, provided it does not increase the degree of nonconformance. If it's intentionally demolished, you can't reconstruct it with nonconformity. So if you knock it down on purpose, you've got to build it back under the bylaws, under the zoning laws. If, this is the part which Reading residents may be interested in in particular. If a nonconforming structure may be restored or reconstructed after unintentional loss, provided that the restoration or reconstruction is commenced within two years of the date of the damage, that the reconstruction doesn't increase the degree of nonconformance, and that a zoning permit is obtained. And then there's some language also that we all have to keep in mind these days. Restoration of anything in the special flood hazard area, the river corridor, is subject to the additional requirements of the, the water areas. Two years, again. Too short? Right time? So if, if your house gets wrecked by a flood, if it burns down, knocks over by a tornado, can you start rebuilding it within two years?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that it does say commenced. It doesn't have to be completed within two years.
Commenced.
Yeah, there's no limit on, in this section.
Two years sounds bad to me.
Commenced within two years, but not finished within two years.
Okay. Do we feel any need to go parallel with three years with the nonconforming uses?
I think so. Just by the time you do, you know, you have your permitting, you settle with your insurance, you know, who knows what could come up three years, and then it would align with the use section two.
Jane?
Okay.
Martha, do you think three years is okay?
Yeah, it's fine.
Are no ill-advised reasons why we shouldn't consider that?
Well, I, you know, I mean, I guess, given that it does say that there are additional requirements for flood hazard and river corridor areas that may come into play that would modify that, I think it's okay to say three.
Okay. Anything else in this section that is super noteworthy for us?
We don't have any mobile home parks in town, do we? Not even the hint of one, do we?
Not to my knowledge.
Yeah.
Mobile home parks? Anybody? No? So I don't think we need to include that language then, since we don't have any.
Good, good to know. And the, and the, under D, the specifics about how the ZA or the ZBA goes about ensuring that the degree of nonconformance doesn't increase, is that clear enough?
Basically, that's saying you're rebuilding as was.
This is not part of the, is not meant to be part of the reconstruction. So, yeah. So maybe it needs to be, instead of being C, this should be three. I think when I deleted the other thing, something got changed. And this should be four. So for example, if somebody has a nonconforming structure and they want to put a garage on, let's say it's nonconforming because it's only five feet from the property line, and it's supposed to be 20 feet. If they're going to put the garage on the other side where it's more than 20 feet from, from the property line, then that change wouldn't affect the degree of nonconformance of that structure. But if they have a, a deck that sticks out towards the property line, then that's five, that's what's five feet away from the property line, and they want to put a roof over it, well then you are increasing the degree of nonconformance.
So it's not the footprint, it's putting a roof over the footprint, which increases the degree?
It's enlarging the footprint, increasing the height.
Well, you're changing it from outdoor space to livable, livable space, I guess.
So you couldn't make the deck bigger. You couldn't cover the deck. You couldn't convert it to indoor living space. But on the other side of the house, where it, it's far enough away from the property line.
So if, just to be clear, rebuild, and you move the deck or the garage or whatever that's nonconforming to the other side of the house, when you rebuild, it's okay to put a roof over it?
Yeah, I think it's just whatever is nonconforming, you can't change that.
Okay.
Whatever was there, you can do that again, but you can't change it up.
It should be a simple language as rebuild as was, right?
But, or do you get variance for something that you change?
Well, you could ask for a variance or to put a roof over it.
Right. So then, that solves that problem. So.
Yeah, I'm rebuilding a nonconforming structure, and then you go to get a variance for, to put a roof over the nonconforming structure, which could be approved or denied.
Right. I mean, what this was contemplating, number four here was, and maybe it should be clarified. So that you've got an existing structure that's nonconforming, say it's too close to the property line. It can continue to exist like that forever. You can repair it, you can maintain it. You just can't increase the degree of nonconformance. So what does that mean? That means the part that's nonconforming, which is not necessarily the whole structure. It's, but in this, in this example, it's just the part that's too close to the property line. But I was saying, if you want to put a garage on the other side, which is not too close to the property line, that would be fine.
That complicates the conversation a little bit. I think we should try to simplify it. And I think you, you did a pretty good job here where it says a nonconforming deck or porch cannot be enclosed or converted to indoor living space. I think that's a perfect example of what you cannot do, but you could rebuild the deck.
I think Martha's section four is just trying to give guidance to letter B. So where it says that it doesn't increase the degree of nonconformance. I think it's just trying to say, and here's what that means. I don't think that's additive to the rule up in section two.
Well, it also pertains to number three. "It shall not be altered or expanded in a manner that would increase the degree of nonconformance." So it's not saying, it's not saying it can't be altered or expanded, just can't be altered or expanded in a way that would increase the degree of nonconformance.
Yeah.
So you, so you look at the nonconforming section and say, are they making it bigger? Are they making it taller? Are they enclosing it? Are they changing the use? Well, you know, that would not be okay, but the portion of the structure that is conforming, you could, you know, put a deck on the other side, put a garage on the other side, put an addition on the other side. You just have to not increase the degree of nonconformance.
Yeah. So you can develop your house in conformity with the zoning code in any places that are not the deck, and which is fine.
I think that's pretty.
Okay.
Conversation.
Yeah, I think we're making it harder than.
Yes.
So we're good with the language as it is.
Great, with the renumbering that you just did.
Okay, and the, and three years was for both?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
All right. Uh, next. This seems like, going back to the senior housing concept, we have deferred a conversation around cottage courts. So we still have that language that Martha sent around before that was just a definition. We have not gone through that language, because I don't think we have decided whether or not that's a desirable thing for Redding.
Are we jumping?
Did I miss something?
We're jumping.
Yeah.
What did I miss?
We're jumping over the small lots.
Oh, I didn't mean to do that. Small lots, sorry.
We, we also needed to talk about accessory on-farm businesses again as they relate to nonconformity.
Okay. So. I'm getting ahead of myself, sorry.
Sort of lump those two together.
So let me hear that. So there was a question when we went over this last time. Everyone was pretty much okay with the language, but there was concern about existing farm businesses. We wanted to be sure they were grandfathered. So that, this paragraph here in red addresses that, and it's consistent with what we just discussed in terms of nonconformities. So.
That's the last paragraph, right? I think I lost.
Right.
Yeah.
The one that's.
I read too. So it begins with "an accessory on-farm business that was in existence prior to the effective date of these regulations may continue to operate out of its existing scope." Am I on the right spot?
I think that's right.
Yes. Can you see on my screen?
Yeah.
It's a little redundant because it's elsewhere in the code, but it's very, it's, it's calling it out and saying, if you've got one of these already, it's fine.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
And is everything else in this section the same as it was before, Martha? It is, right? There's nothing new?
Yes. Yes.
We've already gone through the rest of this, that, just that new paragraph?
Right. Yep.
Okay, so I think, I think that's good.
Okay.
We're good. All right, let me slow down my process here. So are we on existing small lots?
Yes.
Okay.
Shuffling around. Get the right document. Okay.
So do we have an account of who's online for Shenan? Are you current with who's?
I think I see Sally Bargrove has joined, if you haven't gotten her already.
Maybe one of them.
Right, Kelly, Sally Bargrove's cleared.
Yeah. So. So the statute asks you to determine how you want to deal with existing small lots. You are allowed to require them to to automatically merge if they come under common ownership with an abutting lot. That is not what your regulations currently say, and I wouldn't suggest that you do say that. I mean, in order to be housing-friendly, which is what I think your intention is here and is the intention of the Bylaw Modernization Grant, it's to allow the lots to remain separate. Existing small lots to remain separate, even if they become, come under the same ownership. But, you know, I'm a good example. I've got a lot next to me. I'm in a five-acre district. I've got a lot next to me. I'm on one acre. It's one acre. If I buy it, it would automatically merge with mine and could not be developed.
So now you have a two-acre lot that can't be subdivided?
In a five-acre.
Correct.
So you're still nonconforming, but you used to be able to have two people who could live there, and now it's just you?
Right. If anyone else bought that lot, they could develop it.
They could.
They could, but I could not because of the automatic merger provisions that are currently in West Windsor's regulations. They're trying to get rid of them. They just haven't adopted the, their new draft, so.
Well, and our current regulations are also trying to get rid of small lots, right? That if we're in the same position, that if I...
No, but the language isn't clear. So the black language is what was there before. Any lot in existence on the effective date of these regulations, individual, separate, and non-affiliated ownership from surrounding properties may be developed. I mean, it's, it, it stops short of saying they're automatically merged, but it kind of implies that. They could be developed if they're in separate ownership, but so it should clearly, clearly say that they automatically merge, or clearly say that they don't, and I was trying to get to clearly saying that they don't. I was trying to get to clearly saying that they don't unless you want them to.
Right, and I agree with that, Martha, the, um, one eighth of an acre. Do we even have one eighth of an acre parcels in ready? One eighth of an acre, I'm trying to visualize, and then the next point is forty feet deep or forty feet wide. That's a really small lot.
So these, um, these standards are coming from the state, right?
The state is the second attachment or under the 24 VSA 4412. They have a pretty thorough definition of, it, it's just a more mature definition of what Martha was editing, I think. Am, am I correct in saying that?
The state is basically saying you can require them to merge except even if your bylaws say that they have to merge when they come under common ownership, there are going to be exceptions to that. And you're, the reading bylaws partially included the exceptions, which was also confusing since there's no clear automatic merger. But they also recognize that there are lots that are too small to be developed unless they can be connected to a public water and sewer system. So in those situations, you are able to say, you know, this lot can't be developed unless it meets these certain criterias.
And I think the states, the state says under B three, at the time of transfer, each water supply and wastewater system is functioning in an acceptable manner.
Right, for B, I mean, I can pull that up. The second part of what the state says is really just the exceptions when you're requiring automatic merger. If you're not requiring the automatic merger, you don't really have to pay any attention to that because that's, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have to consider exceptions. I wish I could have two things up at the same time.
Automatic merger.
So we don't want the automatic merger, right? Okay, I, I think that makes sense, particularly if the goal is to enable more people to have housing. And then I, I think that the parameters that Martha has included here are coming out of the state law. The lot isn't not less than an eighth of an acre, it's got to be at least forty feet on both sides. It has to comply with state and local regs for water and wastewater, and it has to meet all other requirements for development within a district. I think this seems clear and rational. Just my opinion.
I do too.
I'm kind of curious about what the state thinks is a, an acceptable manner for wastewater, functioning in an acceptable manner, but we don't have to decide that. But it seems like, you know.
Luckily not failed.
I'm glad we're not including that because that seems really vague. Okay, so we are comfortable with replacing our existing 3.2 with this 3.2.
That's what you're proposing, correct, Martha?
Yes.
The edits not adopting the language from the state, the 4412.
Correct.
Okay.
And so Martha, in our existing language, we have subsection one, which this is replacing our old subsection two talks about merger and says that we don't require that. Are we keep, are you proposing to keep that?
I.
3.22?
I just shut it down, but let me see.
Yeah, because that doesn't state this in this edited version I have.
Okay, so 3.22, I was saying, just cross all that out.
Cross it out, okay. Okey doke. So this is now the whole 3.2.
It's just 3.2, and you probably don't need a one because you don't have a two, so we can further simplify that.
And is it clear or do we need to add a nonconforming lot shall not be demerged? Do we need to clarify that, or is it?
It, it doesn't say that they shall, so it's kind of, I think, maybe odd to say that they shall.
I could make an argument both ways on that. I, I think it's, I think it's okay.
Leaving it out.
I mean, we could say, uh, any lot that's legal is subdivided in existence prior to the effective date of these regulations and which becomes under common ownership shall not be deemed merged and may be legally developed, but I don't know that we need to. I defer to Martha on that.
Any lot that is legally subdivided and in existence prior to the effective date of these regulations shall not be deemed merged if it comes under common ownership, is that what you said?
I mean, we could put that in if we want to put on a historical reference marker to what we're talking about, which is this concept of merger of small lots.
Okay, I, I think I'm okay with it.
Okay. Okay. Now, are we on cottage courts?
Yes.
Cottage courts. We haven't even looked at the language because we haven't, uh, really talked about whether or not these are appropriate for reading. And if they were, like the discussion of senior housing, where they would be appropriate. So I guess I would throw that out there for conversation, Martha, unless you have any context you want to add before we talk about them, since this was your definition.
Well, this is a set of, the, um, draft regulations for another town, I think it was Randolph, uh, that they're considering, they haven't adopted them yet, and it's on the, you know, with, along with the idea of increasing housing, it's one opportunity to potentially do that. It would still be quite limited because of the septic issue. But, um, you know, it's just something you could consider if you want to, I mean, right now you could do this anyway under planned unit development. It's just that planned unit development is pretty hefty, and I think it discourages a lot of people from doing these types of things. And the idea behind the cottage court language is to sort of simplify for a specific type of planned unit development. Make it a little easier for people. But so my, my goal is just to find out, you know, is it something that you're interested in considering for reading, pursuing for reading?
Are there any that we might know of, of what a cottage court is in another nearby town?
Well, there's, there's a few, they're in there, you know, it's a very, very wide spectrum because you can have like in Cavendish where you come off the town road, you go into like a cul-de-sac, if you will, and then there's what, four or five houses there that are kind of pinwheel off of that one cul-de-sac. Then you have, um, developments like, um, in Woodstock, they're building, what, three or four townhouses? Three-story garage, entry-level elevators, rooftops.
Wow.
Um, that's being, it's approved and being built, I believe. So you have the extreme, you know, I, no one, except for White River Junction, I think they're building condos, apartments in White River Junction, but I don't think that would be appropriate for reading. So you have the townhouse all the way to like the pinwheel type and everything in between to consider.
Generally, this concept, you'd have some sort of a common space, common shared space. You know, if it's secure, we're hoping to attract young families, maybe it would be a playground or older people, maybe it would be a gardening space or park space or something like that. But usually it's some sort of cluster around a common space that's shared.
Well, in Florida, it would be like a pool house, a clubhouse, pools, gym, all of that. I don't think it would go that far in Vermont yet.
Well.
This is, it's an evolving demand. Because, you know, before COVID, this wouldn't have even been a thought in this area, you know. But as people have moved up here and they start getting the experience of what it takes to maintain these properties through the winter months, it's becoming more appealing for them to be like, oh, I can buy, I can live, I can be a snowbird, I can live in Vermont during the best times of the year, leave and not have to worry about who's going to shovel the sidewalks, plow the driveway, paint, et cetera. So it becomes a more comfortable, viable market for, for people moving to the area.
So we're thinking that's desirable? So I would say if we think this is something we want to pursue, um, I'm happy to sit with Martha, take a look at that draft and compare it with other similar drafts and try to come up with something writing specific to discuss. I don't want to go through that process if we're like, no, no good for reading. But if we're like, maybe, depending on what it says.
Well, it's interesting because the one in Woodstock probably fits into what Woodstock looks like. But the one in Cavendish, you drive by and it's a blank space, no trees, and just four, five houses sitting there. And it's got no character, it's unappealing, like, you know, so it depends, I guess.
It depends.
Well, I think.
Depends on the developer.
Yeah, well, and that's, that's the point I was going to, to continue on. You know, some people buy fifty acres, they mow every tree down, they create a knoll or a field or whatever, and they plop a house down in the middle of it, and then they landscape it and wait for thirty years or more for it to mature. Other people buy a parcel, they selectively cut, thin it out, put the house in a more mature vegetation setting, and it, it works beautifully. But that's some people's taste, others not, you know, it just really depends on the, on the demand.
Well, but part of the town plan is the, uh, keeping the rural quality. You know, keeping, it's not the conformity, but keeping, you know, just keeping the sense of the character, I guess is what you call it.
But we're, that is not in conformance with the state because the state, if I'm not mistaken, the state says we can no longer use that as a reference. Right, Martha? You can't use the character of a neighborhood for development purposes.
You can't use it to exclude affordable housing.
Right, okay.
But this isn't necessarily.
Yeah, it's not necessarily.
Or it could be all affordable.
Everybody to build more housing right now, so that's, that's their, that's their target for state purposes. Martha, have you seen, have you ever seen any language around cottage courts that tries to specify certain types of development, you know? Anything that would make it one of the nicer developments as opposed to one that's clear cut with houses plopped on it like Stacy was describing?
I haven't seen a whole lot of examples in Vermont. I don't know if there's a lot of them out there, um, to be, to be honest, so. I don't know how well they've caught on here yet. But, you know, I haven't, I haven't looked, I haven't.
So we would be early adopters.
We need what?
We would be early adopters.
And I think the draft that Martha sent over was a more affordable housing approach when you're speaking of units not to exceed nine hundred square feet or twelve hundred square feet where if you wanted, I'm not sure what the, the, the term would be, but if you wanted to say, I think the townhouses in, in Woodstock are what, three thousand square feet each? So you go from affordable to very not affordable.
That might be a mansion court.
Yeah.
Not a cottage court. I, I think this is a pretty complex issue.
It is.
And it's hard to decide on the fly, do we want to allow this, do we not? I'm happy to engage in a little bit more research, uh, and look and see with you, Martha, whether we can find more, um, examples that might help define this a little bit more. I, I'm not feeling moved to think that reading needs to be an early adopter of this, of this, but you know, if we find a good example, maybe, maybe I could be persuaded of it.
Well, I think we should, we can dig into this a little bit further, but I believe you can do an HOA in reading. There is an example of an HOA that was developed years ago. It's been, there's been a lot of controversy surrounding it.
Where is it?
It's the one, um, it's up, uh, what's it, it's not Rist Hill, is it? It is Rist Hill.
Oh.
Yeah. So if you're heading over towards Plymouth.
I've driven on that road and I haven't seen anything.
So I don't, I don't want to dig up old wounds, um, but that was an early attempt. I want to say in the seventies, eighties, maybe early eighties, where someone with a large parcel did an HOA, and you can still do an HOA as long as you, whomever sponsoring the HOA assumes total responsibility and liability for construction of the roads, the septics, maintenance, nothing can fall on the town.
So it wasn't Hawk and HOA?
That's not necessarily a bad thing, right?
It's not a bad thing at all, in my opinion.
So was Hawk, was Hawk and HOA? Yeah, Hawk Homes in Plymouth.
I think it is an HOA.
Yeah, well, that went under.
I'm not too, too familiar with it, but.
I still live over there.
But there are HOAs sprinkled throughout.
And it was a great thing, but now it, it's been, it went under, it doesn't, and there's still a restaurant and an inn and tennis courts and everything there that have just been abandoned. So.
But the flip to that is some are extremely successful because you take away that maintenance issue for people.
Is Queechee an HOA?
Queechee is, there's several actually over there. They just approved a new one, I believe. They're building, they're, actually they're building, I think, twelve hundred, fourteen hundred square foot units. Very modern, very cool looking flat roofs.
Well, we can keep talking about this, or I would suggest that this is something we should all think about more, look into more, find a couple more examples of, um, and see if we can wrap our heads around the feasibility of this for reading. So that's the, that's the homework assignment, find examples. If you find anything, I'm happy to mull through them with Martha and try to, you know, draft some language if it makes sense.
There was another town, and I forget which one, I barely ever maybe that was considering something like this, and as I recall, the language was very similar. And they kind of got to the end of their revision process and said, well, we're not there yet, you know. We might consider this again in a year or two. So they had a draft that they were quite confident with yet, so.
In a year or two, there might be more examples.
Yeah.
Uh, both of language and of actual courts that can help, help us get our heads around it.
Right, so.
And I'm not even sure if we need.
Looking at examples, that, that's great, um, and if by late fall, you're still not sure, just, you know, you can kick it, kick that can down the road.
Okay.
Can I say something? Hey, this is Ted Strickland, I have a plan that one one, one 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 for the last offer.
Yeah, go ahead.
I also reside in, in Madison, Connecticut. You do move, you, you do not want these cottage courts. You should not have any zoning that allows them. They are, they are ruining our town with such things. They, they just don't comply, they just don't align with what you're saying that we want reading to be. And this is, you know, on the shoreline of that. We don't like them here and we definitely don't want them in Redding.
Okay, duly noted, Ted. Thank you for speaking up. You sound like you have some firsthand experience, which apparently none of us do.
They, they, I'll give you a background. They, they took a home that was seventeen eighty vintage, sitting on four acres. A band, you know, proper needed work, but somehow the planning and zoning allowed ten, eight hundred square foot, I'm calling them tool sheds, to be built in an array with no trees, they're all the same. They just look terrible and they're a million dollar piece. It's crazy.
Okay.
And just destroyed a landmark historic home and turned it into, you know, like an array of, of tool sheds, as I'm, I'm describing.
Okay.
A million dollar tool shed.
Thank you for that heads up, Ted. We will, I think offline, each do our own research and if it never comes up again, you'll know what happened. And if we bring it up again, we can discuss further. Good?
Good move, yep.
Okay, I think we are on, if I haven't skipped over anything. I think we're on our last thing for tonight. Zoning ordinance wise, but this was predicated on Martha, whether or not you have talked to our zoning administrator and gotten any feedback yet. I know he's been away, so maybe we don't know yet whether this is ripe.
Did talk to Bob. He is still interested in being able to approve two lot subdivisions. I started not drafting language, but I haven't finished it. So I can have that for you next time.
Okay, and could you just describe this a little bit, what this would do and mean for everyone, so we know what we're going into the next time?
Right now, Bob can approve a lot line adjustment, which, you know, if that's not self-explanatory, I can, I can go into more detail, but if it's an actual subdivision where you're taking one lot and dividing it into two or more lots, it has to go to the ZBA. And a lot of times those are fairly simple if it's just a two lot subdivision. You know, you're in a take or ten acre zone. I mean, a five acre zone and you got ten acres, you want to divide it into two five acre lots. You're not creating any non-conformities, none of the property lines are going to be too close to a house or anything like that. When it's fairly straightforward, it's, it's kind of overkill to give it to the ZBA. So the language would, would allow him to approve those where they are straightforward, but it would also allow him in situations where, for whatever reason, it's not straightforward, he can kick it to the ZBA.
So the subdivision criteria is pretty well defined currently. So if it, I'm taking this as if it meets all that criteria instead of someone coming to this board and saying, can I do this? And of course, it's obvious they can. You know, they're sort of, it's not an efficient process where they could go to Bob, the ZA and say, it meets all the criteria, Bob understands it meets the criteria, he signs off on it, it's done.
Okay. Yeah, we can talk more about the substantive changes next time and go back and look at what we say now. I have questions about it, but I can say that till next time.
The other thing is, in doing this, in adding this language, I'd also like to sort of reorganize it a little bit. So it's, so there are three clear separate sections on lot lines, two lot subdivisions and, you know, what I'll call major subdivisions or three or more lots. So.
Yeah, I mean, my initial reaction is that I would, I think neighbors should always know if this is coming their way on a subdivision, which they do now because it gets posted. So that's just something to think about, you know, if, if, if the property next door is getting subdivided and developed, that might be something that a butter should be aware of. But we can think that through next time.
So if the, if for clarification, that if the ZA is allowed to create an obvious two lot subdivision, there's no need for warning, posting, whatever would be needed as it is.
Yeah, every permit gets posted somewhere or it's supposed to. So assume there's some sort of bulletin board near the town office or something where all zoning permits get posted.
But there would be no process for an abutter who had a concern to air that publicly, right?
Presumably someone could apply. And, well, you can, you can always appeal any decision of the zoning administrator. So if Bob approved it and it was posted, then within fifteen days it can be appealed.
Can you? Sorry. Can you, oh, now here it is. Five point six is our current subdivision review. So we could, let, let's talk about it next time when we have language in front to discuss. And, and it sounds like some improvements can be made. And let's just see if that makes sense.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Martha, have you seen other towns where the ZA's been, been allowed this posting or a notification to the abutting landowners prior to it? I know you can do the appeal within fifteen days. But prior to that or during the application process, have you seen towns notify abutting landowners?
I'm not aware of that language. I can look into that, whether there's any reason why you couldn't do that. Yeah, I'll look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. That brings us to the end of our, our work plan for tonight. The next item on the agenda is to plan for our next meeting, which should be Monday, June third. Yeah, does that work for everybody?
Well, I'll be zooming in.
Oh, yeah? Where are you gonna be? Never mind, don't say it. Never mind.
Dude, you really want to know?
Let's see. So we are, we are trying to stay on track with a work plan drafted by Martha that has every month listed out and a suggestion of what the topics should be. We are relatively on track and the point of it is that we are supposed to have this to our select board for them to adopt by January thirty first of twenty twenty five. If we want to take the benefit of having part of our grant. Forget it. So we're trying to keep on this track. The next things that we're supposed to be talking about for June, subject to whatever tweaking Martha has, is revisions to parking, shared parking, EV charging and adaptive reuse of historic buildings. So that is the teaser for next time. Any other thoughts on the next meeting? We should consider? Anything for me, Martha?
Just the email that I sent around earlier about the joint meeting with the select board to do a town plan consultation and it sounded like June tenth was the best date for everybody.
Yeah, Bob and Bob on the select board responded. We all responded, so.
Is that considered a public meeting that needs to be noticed and warned or is that a training that is exempted?
That would, that, yeah, that would be a public meeting.
So it, it's part of the select board meeting, right? It would be on their agenda? Is that how I'm understanding?
Part of the select board or is it a separate meeting?
It could certainly just be part of the select board meeting.
So maybe that's the easiest. Okay. So we should, at some point, make sure the select board is aware to include that on their agenda for June tenth.
If, if everyone wasn't copied on all of the responses, I can let them know. I don't know if we heard from Lisa and she's on the list.
Lisa's on.
Jason tracked me down.
Oh, she did.
Jason tracked me down, yes. So I, I did respond to you that either date would work for me, that's fine.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, of course.
To make sure it's on the agenda?
Yeah, Lisa, can you ensure that that's on the agenda?
Absolutely.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Lisa, if need be, I know there were leave for a secretary for the select board. I could take minutes for that meeting since it will be a, a joint meeting potential.
Thank you.
Oh, Shanann, that would be great. I will mention that to Robert and Bob. Thank you.
Perfect. Any other business for tonight? Any public comments? Anyone on the Zoom, public comments?
Yes, nice work for you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're trying. Great. That brings us to the end of our agenda.
I move to adjourn.
A second?
I'm in favor. Okay, we stand adjourned. Thanks very much, everybody.
Thank you.